Regular meeting number seven will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Councilmember Page, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome the founder and pastor of In His Presence Ministries International, Reverend Alex Abroca Clody. Good to see you again Reverend. Welcome to council, please.
Let us bow our head for a word of prayer. Messiful, loving, and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good things, and we thank you this day for your many blessings. This evening, our elected leaders set to discuss the city's business. We ask that you bless them abundantly as they seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with them in their deliberations and help them make wise decisions for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in them. Gracious God, help them lead with integrity, that their decisions may reflect what is right and what is good. Help our elected officials make decisions that are for the good of all. Dear Lord, grant we, the citizens of Columbus, the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say, in the spirit of peace. All glory to you, loving God, now and always, amen.
Thank you. Thank you Reverend Abroca Clody. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you clerk. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? For a second. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read in the record?
Not this time.
Are there any resolutions by members of council? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown.
Thank you. President Klein, I just have an announcement, a reminder, which I also gave last week, that this Saturday, the city is holding our Black History Month celebration at the King Arts Complex. The theme is "Make a Joyful Noise," a celebration of gospel music. Again, it's this Saturday, February 13th, at the King Arts Complex, and it is 1:00 PM to 2:30 PM. And I want to thank again Director Brandon and her team for putting this together for the city. That's all I have.
Councilmember Mitchell, Jay Brown.
Thank you Council President. I have two announcements for this evening. One, on Sunday, February 14th, the 12th District American Legion will be holding the four chaplain service. This service remembers the four WWII Army chaplains who courageously gave their lives to save the military and civilian personnel as the SS Dorchester sank on February 3rd, 1943. The ceremony will be held here in council chambers and begins at 1:00 PM, and all are welcome. Second, I would like to congratulate the Columbus Division of Police for the first ever undercover compliance investigation in the nation focused specifically on scrapyards within a single large municipality. This investigation resulted in six grand jury indictments. One of the indictments is for the very serious crime of engaging in a pattern of corrupt activity commonly referred to as the RICO. At this scrapyard, 56 veteran grave markers from Union Cemetery were recovered. There were 87 different beer kegs, 409 storage bins that belonged to the Family Dollar and CVS. PepsiCo was able to recover 782 shells for 2-liter bottles. Coke was able to recover 317 shells, and 7-Up recovered 382. There were 7,800 pounds of shredded plastic recovered. Almost four tons of Pepsi, Coke, and 7-Up property were shredded to be shipped to China. Although the theft of grave markers is a grave and despicable act, even more troubling is the theft of public safety infrastructure such as communication wire, radio, railroad materials, and manhole covers. Both the thieves and the public are put at great jeopardy when these items are stolen. I also want to acknowledge former Chair of Public Safety and now Mayor Gensler for championing the City of Columbus scrap metal legislation. This legislation is the first of its kind and has subsequently been adopted by the state of Ohio along with a statewide "do not buy from convicted thieves" registry, which lists the names of nearly 300,000 individuals barred from selling to scrapyards and pawn shops. As part of the Columbus undercover investigation, three of the scrapyards purchased prohibited material from individuals who were found on this registry. I would also like to thank the 13 scrapyards in Columbus for fully complying with the new law. So, great job Columbus Police, and especially acknowledgement to Detective Jack Addington. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Mr. Brown. Councilmember Harden.
Not this time.
Councilmember Page. Councilmember Stenziano.
Thank you President Klein. Just a announcement, I would like to take this opportunity to remind the citizens of Columbus that I will be holding a public hearing tomorrow on the Columbus Water System and how we keep our water safe. Director Tracy Dades of the Public Utilities Department and Dr. Teresa Long from the Public Health Department will be in attendance to present helpful information and answer any questions from the public as it relates to the topic. I encourage everyone to attend the hearing tomorrow, February 9th, at 2:30 PM here in Columbus City Council Chambers. Thank you President Klein.
President Pro Tem Tyson.
Thank you President Klein. Yes, I have resolution 0030X-2016. I'm going to ask Reverend Tyrone Laws and Elder Larry Price to come to the podium, please. This resolution is to celebrate Black History Month in 2016 in the City of Columbus and to recognize the contributions that the Baptist Ministerial Alliance of Columbus and Facinity have made to advancing civil rights in Central Ohio. Whereas Black History Month, originally named Negro History Week, is celebrated during the month of February and dates back to 1926, when Dr. Carter G. Woodson set aside a special period of time in February to recognize the heritage and achievement of African-Americans. And whereas the modern civil rights movement was indisputably one of the most pivotal periods in American history, whereas a major reason for the movement's success was its religious leadership. The Reverends Martin Luther King Jr., Andrew Young, Fred Shetelsworth, Wyatt T. Walker, Joseph Lawrie, and Jesse Jackson were just a few of the gifted religious figures who had leadership roles in the movement, and whereas in many instances, African-American clergy became the spokespersons for campaigns articulating the grievances of African-Americans as well as providing messages of inspiration and hope. Whereas the Baptist Ministerial Alliance of Columbus and Facinity fulfills its mission by participating in numerous community engagement activities, including sponsoring a Christmas food basket giveaway, which benefits more than 225 families. The Baptist Ministerial Alliance also sponsors a senior citizen luncheon, as well as memberships with the Columbus Recreation and Parks, allowing 300 school-aged children to enjoy swimming pools at the recreation centers. Whereas the Baptist Ministerial Alliance of Columbus and Facinity Civic Embodiment Committee is actively involved in issues affecting the African-American community, both politically and socially, and has sought a partnership with the City of Columbus and the Columbus Board of Education to ensure that Columbus is the best place to live, work, and to raise a family. Whereas the Baptist Ministerial Alliance of Columbus and Facinity, along with other prominent civil rights advocates and countless others, are fighting against the social and political hardships facing African-Americans to pave the way for future generations to succeed. Now therefore being resolved by the council of the City of Columbus, this council recognizes the importance of the contributions of the Baptist Ministerial Alliance of Columbus and Facinity and has made to civil rights in Central Ohio, and does hereby celebrate February 2016 as Black History Month in the City of Columbus. I move for passage.
Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Reverend Tyrone Laws is the president of the Baptist Ministerial Alliance, and the floor is yours.
Well, we just want to thank every one of you. We certainly appreciate our civic servants for our opportunity to work with you collaboratively to make sure that we do all we can to improve our wonderful city and make it all it can be, in fairness, justice, and equality. Move by love. Thank you.
Wait a second, give me your resolution.
Oh, it's clapping. Thank you.
Just two announcements. And the first one is workers may get a larger tax refund this year because of the Earned Income Tax Credit, EITC. In 2015, over 2.5 million workers received $66.7 billion in EITC funds. If you worked last year and your income is less than $53,267, you may be eligible to receive EITC. EITC can mean up to a $6,242 refund when you file a return and have qualifying children. Workers with no qualifying children are also eligible for a smaller tax credit. Find out if you're eligible by using EITC Assistant, available in both English and Spanish. And the Assistant will help you find your filing status, determine if you have qualifying children, verify your EITC eligibility, and estimate the amount of your credit. Visit www.irs.gov/EITC to check your eligibility. You could also contact the United Way of Franklin County. Also, tomorrow, Tuesday, February 9th, at 5:00 PM, I will convene my committee hearing on Finance, Health and Human Services, and Workforce Development. You will hear legislation that will appear on the city council agenda in the next two weeks. All interested people, please come to the hearing and fill out a speaker slip, and you'll be eligible to speak on the forthcoming legislation. You have three minutes to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you President Pro Tem Tyson. I do have one resolution. It's 29X2016, to congratulate Experienced Columbus on their 75th anniversary. I'd like to invite up Brian Ross and his entourage from Experienced Columbus, of whoever he sees fit. And I'm not going to read the resolution, but I am going to highlight two staggering statistics. 38 million visitors a year that Experienced Columbus is responsible for bringing in. Linda Logan, come on up Linda. And then $5.7 billion in economic impact. That is a lot of money that helps support our local businesses, our hospitality industry, and the arts, and human services, that all win because of the bed tax revenue. And we appreciate the work that you're doing. So I'd like to move for passage on 29X2016. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you clerk. The floor is yours Mr. Ross, and we'll hopefully get a chance to hear from our expert in the sports world, Ms. Logan.
Absolutely. First of all, thank you very much President Klein and councilmembers. We're very appreciative for this recognition. We do have an invite, which I believe all of you have, and of course, at the top, you will see that beautiful skyline that is one and only for our tremendous city here. 75 years. We look pretty good for 75, right? But we've experienced a lot of tremendous successes as an organization, which is a direct reflection of our city and the growth our city has had over the past 75 years. 2015 was a record year with bed tax dollars, over $42 million in bed tax, which we know is very important to our organization, the Sports Commission, but also the Housing Trust, the arts community, and also human services. So that's very important to us as we continue to grow. The visitor volume, the direct spend's very important as well, and we believe in the next 75 years it'll even be more prosperous. And we just look forward to your continued collaboration as we grow our city and continue to be very competitive in this visitor industry, which is a very and very important part of our local economy.
Thank you Mr. Ross. Ms. Logan?
Yes, we're very proud of the 75th anniversary, and we also have a special event coming up this month, on February 17th, the Women's Sports Report, where we'll be celebrating all the great achievements for all the girls and women of Central Ohio. And it's actually the 40th anniversary of the National Girls, actually 30th anniversary for the National Girls Day in sport as well. So Kerry Walsh Jennings will be there representing. All the big events that we have coming up in Columbus, we're going to be the hub for women's sports the next two years. The Women's Final Four in basketball in '18. This year, we have the Final Four of women's volleyball as well. And a lot of great things happening also at Capital and Ohio Dominican, so we're excited to be sharing in the 75th anniversary with Experienced Columbus and all the good things happening there as well.
Thank you Ms. Logan. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Thank you for all the great work that you all do, and here's your resolution.
Appreciate it.
How about comments from our elected officials? Auditor Dorian? City Attorney Pfeiffer? I don't see Judge Barrows from the municipal court bench, or any other elected officials here at this time. Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive second reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Economic Development Committee ordinance is 289 and 290-2016. Education Committee ordinance is 240-2016. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 177-2016. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 303 and 310-2016. And Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 145 and 195-2016.
Thank you. Will the following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions? Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers for each?
Finance Committee ordinance 236-260-2016. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 186, 187, 203, 207, 227-2016. Economic Development Committee ordinance 242-2016. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 98, 137, and 243-2016. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance 244-2016. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 108 and 112-2016. Housing Committee ordinance is 178, 192, 193-2016. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 3091, 3172, 3207-2015. And ordinance is 422, 2639, 4349, 6067, 102, 132, 172-2016. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee ordinance 180-2016.
Thank you Clerk Blevins. We do have one non-agenda, or I'm sorry, we have one consent action speaker, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Looks like he's speaking in favor of ordinance 192-2016. Mr. Wilkins? Good to see you again sir. If you could restate your name for the record, any organizations you have, you're representing tonight, you have three minutes.
Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, Chairman of Solid Vacant and Amendment Property in North Flinney. I just wanted to know what two properties in will be turned over to Milo Grogan, if I can get that information. Thank you for that.
Does Development want to speak on that particular piece?
Thank you President Klein, members of council. Those two pieces are part of a low-income tax credit housing program with home port, so they will be developed for homeownership.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions about the consent action agenda before we move for passage? Seeing none, I move for passage of the consent action portion of the agenda. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Looks like we're all set? Okay, alright. We'll now proceed for the reading of 30-day legislation en tabled in emergency. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Our President Pro Tem, Priscilla Tyson, chairs that committee. Miss Chair, Madam Chairperson, the floor is yours.
Thank you President Klein. The first ordinance is ordinance 288-7-2015, and it, first of all, I'd like to take it from the table.
There's requests to take it from the table? For a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Remove from the table.
Thank you. It's to make appropriations for the 12 months ending December 31st of 2016 for each of the several object level ones for which the City of Columbus has to provide from the monies known to be in the treasury of the said City of Columbus and the fund known as the general fund during the said 12 months from the collection of all taxes and from other sources of revenue, the amount of the, for the amount of $835,291,000, and to declare an emergency. Director Lombardi, do you have a couple of comments on this legislation?
Yes, thank you. President Klein, President Pro Tem Tyson, and members of council, the 2016 general fund budget is a continuation budget that addresses basic services for the residents. I would like to thank city council, the city auditor, and the prior administration for all their hard work and efforts in putting together this budget. Furthermore, I'd be remiss not to thank my staff, Adam Robbins and Aileen Heiser and their staff do all the heavy lifting, and I would like to thank them for their hard work on putting together this 2016 budget.
Thank you Director. Certainly, we've had numerous hearings on this budget, and we've heard public comment on this budget, and we're really now ready to move the, pass the budget so that we can do the business of the city. I want to thank you Director Lombardi, thank your team, as you just named, most of your team members who participated. I want to also thank the directors for being at all the hearings and sharing your information with council and the community. I also want to thank our esteemed auditor, Mr. Hugh Dorian. My team, my staff, I want to thank Nicole Harper and James Lewis. And I also want to thank the LRO staff, Michael Kessler and Matt Erickson, and I see Kate Pashadi, that Sweeney, hi Kate, was, worked on this committee prior to her taking her new role. Thank you for your work. And so with that, we want to move this budget forward and do the work of the city. So I'd ask my esteemed colleagues, and thank you for having all your hearings and really working hard on this budget, and I just want to say thank you and would like to pass the budget. Move for passage by, as amended.
Before we move that it's been seconded, I'd just like to recognize you, President Pro Tem Tyson. It's an arduous task for an $835,291 budget, so we appreciate the work that you and your staff do to head us in the right direction, and of course, the cooperation that the administration provides, Director Lombardi, and then of course, our other branch of government, Auditor Dorian, thank you for your efforts as well. The 288-7-2015 has been moved and seconded. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Budget is passed.
Ordinance number 288-8-2015 is to make appropriations and transfers for 12 months ending December 31st, 2016, for other funds for various divisions to authorize the City Auditor to make transfers as may be necessary and to declare an emergency. And in this particular ordinance, some of the funds will be the enterprise fund, special revenue funds, and internal service funds. And so first, I would move to take from the table.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you, and now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 288-9-2015, is to make appropriations for 12 months ending December 31st of 2016 for selected other funds from various divisions to authorize the City Auditor to make transfers as may be necessary and to declare an emergency. I first would like to take from the table.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Move, submit to the clerk.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance number 0258-2016, is to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish various purchase orders for automotive parts, supplies, and services for the Fleet Management Division per the terms and conditions of various previously established universal term contracts, and to authorize expenditure of $2,680,000 from the Fleet Management Fund for same, additionally to authorize expenditure of $350,000, also from the Fleet Management Fund for emergency repair services and parts, and to waive competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code, Chapter 329, for the emergency repairs, services, and parts, and to declare an emergency. This particular ordinance, this UTC for parts, will have, really, there'll be $5.6 million that will be used for parts and services for the calendar year of 2016. We have 6,000 vehicles in operation. We have over 40,000 work orders each year that need to be, to work on our vehicles so that they can meet the needs of our residents. And also, we will have $350,000 in this budget that are going to be used for repairs that were unexpected. I'm going to let Director Lombardi address that.
Thank you. President Klein, President Pro Tem Tyson, and members of council, there are times when there are not contracts set up or contracts established for certain parts and services that may be needed in the normal procurement process timeframe. We won't be able to get those repairs or those parts in time to make those repairs. So we waive competitive bidding for the $350,000 portion of this ordinance to allow the Finance and Management Director to enter into contracts on an emergency basis. We will do all the efforts that we can to make sure that we're getting competitive quotes for those contracts.
Thank you Director. And this ordinance is worth $3,030,000, and I would move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. Now I'd like to move to Health and Human Services. Thank you. Of ordinance number 0182-2016, is to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a contract with LabCorp of America to provide laboratory testing services for various Columbus public health programs, to authorize expenditure of $22,000 from the Health Special Revenue Fund and the Health Department Grants Fund to pay the cost thereof, and to waive competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code and to declare an emergency. And I'm going to ask Dr. Mashika Roberts to share information as to why we're waiving competitive bidding and to share information about this legislation.
Thank you Councilmember Tyson. This legislation helps support our lab and our sexual health clinic that not only services our sexual health clinic clients, but also our tuberculosis clients and our women's health programming. We have a great relationship with LabCorp, but also there are limited labs that will perform the tests that we need and the timeline that we need them performed. So LabCorp helps us do everything from HIV, gonorrhea, chlamydia, syphilis, as well as the tests we need for tuberculosis and liver function test and kidney function test and things like that to monitor individuals who are being treated for tuberculosis.
Thank you Dr. Roberts.
You're welcome.
I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. The last ordinance of my committee is 0184-2016, is to authorize and direct the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Columbus Neighborhood Health Center, Inc., doing business as Primary One Health, to provide primary health care and dental services at community-based health centers, to authorize the expenditure of $4,799,110 from the Health Special Revenue Fund, and to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code. The Columbus Neighborhood Health Centers doing business as Primary One Health is really a truly a partner with the City of Columbus. Last year, they saw 40,000 patients at 10 locations, 120,000 visits, and that's an increase of 10,000 from the previous year. And they are certainly our partner when it comes to obstetric, obstetric program. One of the greatest concerns though that they have is a high percentage of pregnant women. women that are served by Primary One who are uninsured. And so the numbers range from 40% to 70% across their locations. Without the availability of prenatal care at Primary One Health, these women would have very few options. And so we really do appreciate that opportunity to partner with them to make sure that as we focus on infant mortality, that we have a great partnership with Primary One Health. And we are waiving competitive bidding because we have been in partnership with them since 1974. They are really a true partner for the City of Columbus. And with that, I would move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees this evening.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Education Committee, we have ordinance number 239-2016, to authorize and direct the Director of Education to enter into contracts with various nonprofit organizations to provide after-school programs and services, to authorize the expenditure of $190,000 from the 2016 education budget, and to declare an emergency. These programs serve students from low and moderate income families and are designed to give children a strong sense of self-worth, academic ability, and community responsibility. If there are no questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next, in Education Committee, there is one ordinance under first reading that Councilmember Page will read.
Thank you, Chair Brown and President Klein. I'd like to ask everyone to refer back to page two and its ordinance 240-2016, to authorize and direct the Director of Education to enter into contracts with various nonprofit organizations to provide after-school programs and services, to authorize the expenditure of $164,000 from the 2016 education budget. I would like to first request to waive second reading and request a voice vote.
Ms. Brown?
Abstain.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Abstain.
Tyson?
Yes.
President Klein.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Page. That is all we have in education this evening, President Klein, but with your permission, I'd like to move to Administration Committee. Thank you. And in Administration Committee, we have ordinance number 274-2016, to establish a new authorized strength ordinance for various divisions in the City of Columbus in accordance with the 2016 operating budget as amended, to repeal ordinance 2757-2015, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
That's all I have in my committees. President Klein.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Public Safety Committee, we have ordinance number 0141, to authorize and direct the Finance and Management Director to issue a purchase order for Panasonic Toughbook laptop computers for the Division of Fire from an existing cooperative State of Ohio term-scheduled contract established for such purpose by the State of Ohio Department of Administrative Services Purchasing Office with inside public sector, to authorize the expenditure of $199,686.96 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Council President, if the Deputy Director would have any comments?
Council President Klein, Chairperson Brown, members of council, this ordinance authorizes the purchase of 38 Panasonic Toughbook laptops. These laptops are replacement units for the Toughbook laptops currently used in fire apparatus by firefighters and paramedics. The Fire Division has a need to replace the existing equipment that is beyond its useful life and will no longer be warranted. In 2015, with the help of a funding request put forth by Council President Klein, the Division of Fire spent $492,000 for the purchase of 93 Toughbooks. With the purchase of the additional 38 Model 31 Toughbooks through this ordinance, Fire will finish equipping all of their frontline vehicles with the new model Toughbooks. They will also be able to equip a selective few specialty vehicles with the newer model Toughbooks and have some spares left over for CAD support to exchange when a Toughbook is brought in for repair. That's all I have.
Deputy Director Kate Pashadi, thank you very, very much. That's all I have in Public Safety, Council President.
Thank you, Chair Brown, and to recognize Deputy Director Pashadi, who helped me when I chaired safety on getting these Mac, these Toughbooks in order, so I appreciate it. Now with the elevation of safety, look forward to great work coming from the Safety Department. So thank you for your help. Our next committee is the Public Utilities Committee. Councilmember Stenziano chairs that committee.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in Public Utilities Committee, we have ordinance 107-2016, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to execute a construction contract with Decker Construction Company for the watershed roadway improvements, Part III, Griggs Reservoir Project, to authorize a transfer in expenditure of up to $1,015,015,302.59 with the Water Go Bonds Fund for the division of water and to authorize an amendment to the 2015 capital improvements budget. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Next is ordinance 156-2016, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify the contract for the purchase of wholesale electric power with American Municipal Power Incorporated for the Division of Power, and to authorize the expenditure of $46,150,000 and declare an emergency. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And finally, I have ordinance 170-2016, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to establish a purchase order to make payments to Delaware County for sewer services provided for fiscal year 2016, and to authorize the expenditure of $2,800,000 for the sewage system operating fund. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
President Klein, that is all we have in Public Utilities this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Stenziano. There's no other legislation coming before us. We're going to adjourn. We have zoning, a few pieces of zoning that will take at 6:30. In the interim, we do have a few non-agenda item speakers, so at this time, going to have a motion to adjourn. Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We're adjourned. Regular meeting number eight will now come to order. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Are there any communications or reports received by the city clerk?
No, there are not.
Are there any first readings of 30-day legislation?
No, there are not.
We'll now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Page chairs that committee. Madam Chairperson, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Klein. Tonight in zoning, we have ordinance 215-2016, to rezone 1660 Harrisburg Pike 43223, being 2.7 acres located on the east side of Harrisburg Pike, just south of Chambers Avenue, from L A R O Limited Apartment Office and C P D Commercial Plan Development District to L A R O Limited Apartment Office District. The applicant is Community Housing Network Incorporated in care of David Perry. The proposed use is a 75-unit supportive housing apartment development. The City Department's recommendation is approval. Southwest Area Commission recommends approval. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? I would first like to amend to emergency.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
We now have ordinance 216-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3309.14A height districts, 3312.21AB landscaping and screening, 3312.25 maneuvering, 3312.49C minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 3333-18B building lines, 3333.23B minimum side yard permitted, and 3333.24 rear yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1660 Harrisburg Pike 43223, to allow a multi-unit residential development with reduced development standards in the L A R O Limited Apartment Office District. Again, the applicant is Community Housing Network Incorporated in care of David Perry. The proposed use is a 75-unit supportive housing apartment development. The City Department's recommendation is approval. Southwest Area Commission recommended approval. If there are no questions or comments, I would first like to amend this to emergency. Yes, President Pro Tem Tyson?
Thank you, Councilmember Page. Just really excited about this legislation. We are certainly in need of supportive housing in our community, and so I appreciate Columbus Housing Network and certainly Mr. Perry for, just for additional housing units, and we certainly need more. But thank you for this legislation.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Tyson. If we could amend this to emergency?
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Now I have ordinance 224-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3332.035R3 residential district, 3312.49 minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 3321.05B2 vision clearance, 3332.18D bases of computing area, 3332-21D building lines, 3331.26 minimum side yard permitted, and 3332.27 rear yard of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 341 East Barfman Avenue 43207, to permit a mixed-use business consisting of warehousing, retail, and general office uses with reduced development standards in the R3 residential district. The applicant is Chem Mechanic with R E D Consulting. The proposed use is a mixed-use business with 3,809 square feet of warehouse, retail, and general office area. The City Department's recommendation is approval. Columbus South Side Area Commission recommends approval. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. And our final ordinance this evening is 277-2016, to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 3356.03C4 permitted uses, 3371.01P1 private parking district, 3309.14 height districts, 3312.21D landscaping and screening, 3312.49 minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 3321.07A landscaping, 3356.11C4 district setback lines, 3370.07 conditions and limitations, and 3372.604A setback requirements of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 1774 East Main Street 43205, to allow a 54-unit senior housing apartment building and 1,200 square feet of commercial development with reduced development standards in the C4 commercial and LP1 limited parking districts. The applicant is the Woder Group Incorporated in care of Joseph McCab. The proposed use is a 54-unit senior housing apartment building with an attached 1,200 square feet of commercial space for office, retail, or restaurant use. The City Department's recommendation is approval. The Near East Area Commission recommends approval. And I would just urge my colleagues to support this zoning variance. In supporting this project, we will also get rid of some of the blighted properties that we see on Main Street and continue to support development in the Near East area. So if there are no questions or comments, I would first like to amend to emergency.
Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
And I now move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.
Thank you. That is all we have in zoning this evening, President Klein.
Brown, Brown, Harden, Page, Stenziano, Tyson, President Klein.